Where's my tree? I think I said a little bit too soon. Okay, Clerk Seeger, can you please take roll call?
Gorninsky.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Foster.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
It appears as though Treasurer Slavens is not in attendance, but Snyderman?
Skipped over yourself.
Self last.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I am here.
And then let the record reflect, consistent with Trustee Snyderman's observation, that the clerk is present.
Thank you. Can I have adoption of the agenda? We have some extra guests here from GFL today. We'll just add that to the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the agenda, adding an update from GFL after payment of the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is, I need a motion to approve the minutes for April 4th and 11th, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Gorninsky. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we have a public comment on agenda items only. On agenda items only, it's for three minutes. I'll look online first. I'm looking online. If you want to make a public comment, please raise your hand with your computer. Public comment. I don't see any hands. I don't see anyone online. No public comment online. Anyone in the room wish to make public comment on agenda items only? Okay, no one in the room? All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So then we'll start with GFL. Sam's going to come up and talk to us a little bit about what's been going on out there. And Board can ask any questions. Yes, go on up to the podium, please.
Good evening Supervisor, good morning. Good evening Board. Sam Caremagna with GFL Environmental, your solid waste service provider. I've got with me tonight Jesse Gerdler. He is your general manager in charge of services for Canton Township. And next to him is Nick Allen, which should be a familiar face to you. Nick Allen has been the route manager in the past for Canton Township overseeing the trucks and the operations on the street level, making sure your solid waste, your recyclables, and your yard waste get collected on schedule. So that's the topic, getting collected on schedule. We have had some service delays, as you, as well as everyone in the township is aware of. We've had some trucking problems and some labor shortages just about the same time that the volumes pick up. The grass starts growing, the cleanouts in the garages and neighborhoods start happening. That leads to a bad recipe for us and puts us immediately behind in collection. We had a bad week last week. We're first to admit that. We know that. We worked into Saturday to get you caught up, get us caught up, I should say. We have tapped into other GFL resources in and around Metro Detroit, as far away as Grand Rapids, as far north as Flint, to bring in other trucks and labor to assist us in getting the township done on a regular basis, on time, according to the schedule. That is what we have done. Those are the measures we've taken. Happy to say, yesterday we finished. Today, we are also on schedule to finish, if we're not finished yet. I did some research because of the difference in the two weeks earlier today. Last week on Monday, in the system that we track your complaints, the calls that we received, this is only the system that we track. Now, last week, there were 33 on Monday, calls to our office regarding service issues. This Monday, we had four. Last Tuesday, we had 44. This week, through my tracking of this today, through about 4:00, we had four. So, there's been a tremendous improvement after a horrible week. And we're hoping to keep, we're not hoping, we're going to keep this on track with the resources we've got in Metro Detroit. I'll take any questions you got. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Tanya, sorry.
Yeah, so when people leave a message with you, we have gotten emails about when people leave messages with you, they don't get response from after. Like, it takes more than 24 hours to get a response. So like, what is usually, how do you tackle that is my, that's my first question.
If they leave a message with us in the proper phone number, or the email, or text, whatever it happens to, we should be calling them back. When we fell behind as dramatically as we did last week, we knew that on Tuesday or Wednesday, if we had Tuesday yard waste lane still, we were coming back after that. We were going to eventually get that. There could be a lot of calls we would have had to make. But I think the important thing is, in regard to when we fall behind, is please, we'd like the residents to leave their material out. We will be coming back for it. If we don't finish yard waste one day, we'll be back for it the next day to get it, or in the next couple of days. Because we're trying to prioritize your trash first and foremost, your recycle secondly, and your yard waste third. But we should be calling back. If you've got a specific address or person that wasn't called, I'd like to, maybe you can send it to us and we'll reach out to them.
And my second question was, you know, a couple of Memorial Days, Memorial Day weekends ago, I think, I'm not sure if it was 2021 or 2022, there was a huge backlog because of the Memorial Day weekend. And like, you know, how are you going to address that this year is my concern.
Okay, that's a good question. That's the reason, it's another reason we're bringing help in from other locations in and around Metro Detroit. We're really hoping to be on track and caught up with, not only Canton Township, but all of our communities, by the end of Friday night, be done. So our people can have a long weekend like most people will have. We don't want to get into a Saturday. And then we know we're off Monday for the holiday, and that puts us into a Tuesday through Saturday schedule. So we're going to really have to raise our game to be done by Saturday next week. We don't have a Saturday to default to in the event we don't get done. So we've got things in our favor for that. Of course, you're picking up eight days worth of trash recycling yard waste because you're a day behind. But we also pay our people special holiday pay, which encourages all of them to come to work every day to earn that extra pay for the holiday. So we've got some things in our favor that should help us keep you on schedule.
Is Canton the only community that you're having trouble? I'm just wondering how you're able to move resources from other communities into Canton?
Canton is not the only community we've had trouble. We've been behind in, not numerous, but we've been behind in other communities in and around Southern Wayne County, which I'll consider the Southern Wayne County. We're able to bring resources in from other areas, especially Grand Rapids and Northern Michigan, because they're still behind us in the way of cleanups and grass growing and things like that. So we take a truck or two out of each location and bring them in. And when you have a dozen locations, you can quickly get 10, 15 trucks down here to start helping.
How quick is quickly?
Sorry?
How quick is quickly? You said you can quickly get trucks down here.
Well, we recognized the problem last week, and we made that call and brought our resources together and made that call. So we had trucks on the street as of the end of last week. I think we brought 55 trucks, 55, 55 trucks in here on Saturday to get you cleaned up. This is normally a, your town is normally a 8, 11, 16 truck operation-ish each day. We brought 55 trucks in, 55, to make sure we got the job done Saturday.
So with the increased demand with the yard waste, is bringing that many trucks from other communities sustainable?
It is, the amount of trucks we can bring in, a couple from each site, is sustainable until we get where we need to be at the Wayne site. Now, the site that services Canton Township is on Van Born in the city of Wayne, which is not far from your DPS building. So until we get this ship righted, we will bring in trucks from other locations of GFL and make sure you get picked up.
I appreciate bringing in extra trucks. I'll just note that I think we, as trustees, got emails Monday morning about people that hadn't gotten their trash, their trash picked up, or their yard waste picked up by the end of last week. And so I just would like to note that.
If they're still active, we will send somebody out to look.
I think it got picked up Monday morning, but it was supposed to be picked up last week.
I looked at some of these numbers that I gave you earlier. I looked at some of these calls that came in on our system, our side of things, and some of them came in 8:00 in the morning, or late Saturday night, they didn't get picked up, you know, late 4:00 Saturday afternoon. So some of them were picked up. There might have been a few missed, because again, you bring 55 trucks in here, that's a lot of commotion, a lot of trucks, too many to have to, for the township to have to deal with and see on a Saturday, I'll be first to admit that. But we had multiple supervisors out here as well, watching those trucks. We brought in four different supervisors. Where normally it's the one supervisor program, we brought in four different supervisors to watch the program. And Jesse was in on Saturday as well, orchestrating the dispatching and completion of the work.
So I have a few questions, one of which was about how many trucks. But yard waste pickup is something that we do every year, so it's predictable that that's going to be happening. So I guess I don't understand why you weren't prepared for that.
We have changed, as I said a little bit ago, we have Jesse Gerdler as our new general manager for the Wayne location. We had a manager prior to him. I don't know that you ever met him, Arthur Jordan. Arthur Jordan left the company. Jesse came in as a new general manager. He's picking up some of the pieces that were left off, getting the trucks repaired, getting the staff adequately hired, and he's got a recruiting team that's working with him right now. So we've got a lot of resources in this thing, and you're absolutely right. The grass starts to grow every year in this time of the year, and this is no different. But it's always a challenge, whether it's here or somewhere else, it's a challenge every year for yard waste collection, at least in the beginning stages. There's an incredible amount of cleanup that happens in every community, here being no different than many others. But yes, we should have been better prepared.
I want to throw this out there. I don't think you're going to like it, but previous to being on the township board, I was on the school board, and we transported students by bus. When there were issues with not having enough bus drivers, the people in the office, the local office for the bus company, were all certified bus drivers, and they would go and they would substitute. So I'm wondering, you know, if that would help, or if that's a possibility? Because to me, when there's a role that needs to be filled and you can't fill it, then I think then it's, you know, your administration's job to fill that role.
You bring a good point. There's not one of us that hasn't driven a garbage truck, and especially at Christmas time and springtime when that hits. So we do that. We'll bring people out of the route manager and lead man roles, and put them in trucks for the day to drive the trucks. So we have done that, we will do that. That happens across the board and has for many years.
I asked the same question last year, and I got a different answer, though, so.
Who'd you ask the question of?
I believe it was you. I think you were on video.
I don't think I was here. I'm answering as sincerely as I can, because I've grown up in this business, and believe me, when spring hits, I was taken out of whatever I was doing, working in the garage, working as a route manager, and I was driving a truck. So this is not a make-believe thing. I know firsthand how that works. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thanks for coming out and talking to us. It's always good that we have conversation on this. I appreciate you guys being open about it. The only question I have that hasn't already been asked is, in terms of hiring and wages, and I'm sure like every other industry, after the pandemic, you saw an increase in demand for employees and drove up wages. So has that evened out, or does this show us that it hasn't yet?
I think the wages have pretty much stabilized. There's still a challenge for CDL drivers. The ability-
CDL, what, CDL?
CDL, Truck Driving License. CDLB, which is a truck driving license for a straight truck, which is what we use to collect all three of your services here. There's still a challenge for drivers. I know, we were talking about buses a few minutes ago, I know the bus, the busing agencies have one heck of a time as well. We've bolstered that, raised our wages to over $25 an hour to start. And again, we were, it wasn't long ago, we were at $18. So we've made tremendous increases in driver wages, and even the person on the back of the truck, that person is now making over $18 an hour to start. And yet, there are still challenges. That's pretty good money, because we know we're going to work 50, 55 hours a week. There's a lot of overtime. There's a lot of money to be made here. And I guess if anybody's watching on the TV screen, or whoever's watching, if you're looking for work, or have a child looking for work, or know somebody looking for work, please send them our way. We are looking. This is great summer work for college children. It is, it's, we're reaching out all the time.
On the CDL side, do you, look at me, I'm using terminology now. On the CDL side, do you pay for them to go get their CDL, or make offers to do that?
We'll assist to get their license. In the, here's, in the older days, what happened was you'd come in with a CDL permit, just like your learner's permit when you get your driver's license. We'd put you in a truck with an experienced driver, and we'd sit side by side. And the driver would learn how to drive a big vehicle, and then once you were done, you'd go to the Secretary of State, take a quick road test, and then you would be, you'd be a CDL driver. And we'd go through our training program to make sure you understand our trucks particularly. Now, it's changed a little bit. Now you have to go to a truck driving school to get your license. So there's a truck driver shortage in the United States, and we've, for better or worse, we've complicated the process to get the license, and it adds to the challenge. But believe me, we're training, we're taking school bus drivers, we're taking whatever we can get, box truck drivers, and making garbage people out of them, and that will not stop. We've got a full recruiting team that's working with Jesse and his team to get this done. There's more conversation around that these days than there is anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, the back drivers, the back pickup people make 18 an hour. What are your CDL, what are your starting rate on your-
$24, $25, depending on the truck.
Is that the rate out there now?
Yes.
What we seem to have, you know, Canton's a big community, it's a large community. I know you do a lot of large communities, but what seems to happen is we seem to get the same people missed all the time, because we have cul-de-sacs and courts and things like that. So how do we start to resolve that? How do we resolve that?
We've got a couple, and we've got some weekly reminders to remind folks. Let's talk about Burr Ridge Court that got missed again last week or two weeks ago, whatever happened to Ben. We were simply behind that day, and that's why it got missed. So that's the reason for that street. I think Ridge Road is another where we have some ongoing service problems, and Nick is out there now doing some route manager work, and so he knows what exactly those stops are. And as we bring in another route manager to assist, it's going to be Nick's job to educate that person on these particular stops.
Do you have cameras on your trucks at all, where you can see things missed, or?
We have, we have, the company is going to a Drive Cam, Lydix-type system, where there's a camera in the front of the truck. So we're evolving into that, moving into that, but we do not have a camera that will show each stop, no.
What about, I know that we had talked about, you know, transition time is when yard pickup starts to come, or, like you said, the Christmas trees at the end of the year, the extra trees that are out there. So is there a reason that you wouldn't want to just keep the waste for the yard waste and the tree waste on Saturdays during these times?
Well, it's tough to get people to work on that Saturday. Everybody likes their weekend. We think that your Saturday collection will get us through a difficult time when the real growing season is there for June, as the rain starts coming, it makes that grass grow, obviously. But we think we'll get through that probably less time than what you've posted out there for Saturday collection. But let's leave it as it is and work through it and get back to a normal schedule as soon as possible.
And then how many communities does GFL have in Michigan?
Oh, over 100.
I know that, I mean, I'm hearing from other mayors that we're having, they're having the same issue. So is it, how are you going to, by moving trucks around, how are you going to resolve all that?
Well, the Wayne site is a little bit shorthanded on staff, where other sites are a little, maybe a little more on the main road, a little more mainstream and can be seen. So their staffing is a little more natural to them. I mean, if you have a shop on Mound Road, well, you've got a lot of traffic on Mound Road, where Jesse's shop on Van Born isn't easily seen, there's no bus traffic there. So it's a little more out of the way to get people to come to. It's a challenge he's got, he knows it. But we'll continue to bring people, advertising, we're going to continue to bring people in to do that job. So while we might pull people from our Sterling Heights location, or our Warren location, or I'd say, or our Sterling Heights, our Warren, our Pontiac, our Arbor Hills location, our Grand Rapids and Flint location, we're pulling people a truck or two, and that might make them work a little longer, but it'll ensure that we get done. So those are the shared pains that we're dealing out right now.
Okay, so what do you, let me see, so you're thinking, we're looking at the end of July right now for Saturday pickups, to make, for the yard waste, to make sure we get there. What is still the best way, if people do not, I mean, obviously, we get our Canton advocates called, my office is called, I know the clerk's office. What is the best way for a resident to get ahold of somebody right away if they've missed, if you've missed something?
I think typically, they go through your DPS service, who then sends a note to the route manager, which is Nick, and that's the quickest and most efficient way to get to us. Excuse me. Nick, do they have access to Q Alert? So we have a Q Alert system, it's an electronic system, and it goes through our customer care center. I know some calls go there. And again, if they go to, Mary is our call center manager, if they go there, she's got a, obviously, the computer, keys in the missed pickup on Burr Ridge Court, and it gets sent to the route manager via his tablet. So it can go either way, but I think the most efficient way is probably through your DPS. Your gal's there, straight to the route manager, Nick at this time.
Okay, so then just putting it online isn't necessarily the fastest way to get somebody back to their house, right?
Either way, either way, but your process here is through your DPS.
Other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you for coming, and yes, we'll stay on top of this, because I know that this is our top-of-the-line call every day.
We sincerely apologize for the service failures we've had, and know that we're, call it all high ands on deck, or whatever you want to call it. We've got more than just myself and Jesse and Nick here involved. We've got our regional support group involved, our human resources group involved. We've got our other 10 operating sites involved in this to give Jesse the support he needs to get this thing back on track for you. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing for approval of the 2023 CDBG program year and annual action plan?
Madam Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to hear comment on the Advisory Council recommendations for the fiscal year 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program at 7:23.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, public hearing is open. Let me look online. Do you, we have a presentation from our CDBG group, or no? Okay. Let me look online to see if we have any questions about CDBG. You can raise your hand electronically. I'm looking online. One, two, three, we have about eight people online. Please raise your hand if you have any questions. I don't see any hands raised. No hands, no hands, okay. Any in the room? Any questions on CDBG, or questions or comments?
Madam Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing for input onto the fiscal year 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program at 7:24.
Support.
By Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Gorninsky. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Madam Supervisor, unless you have a presentation?
No presentation.
I move to adopt the 2023 Annual Action Plan and authorize the submission of the 2023 Annual Action Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD for short.
Made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a consent calendar.
Is that Trustee Snyderman who seconded?
I did.
Okay, good. Sorry. We're moving quite the clip here. Madam Supervisor, I move to the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider a resolution regarding United States Department of Agriculture, or USDA for short, Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Inflation Reduction Act grant application. C2, consider a resolution regarding correction of errors on the zoning map. C3, consider approval of reallocation of fund balance commitments for board-related goals. C4, consider approving a lateral pay benefit to three eligible POAM bargaining unit employees, police. And item C5, consider authorization of permit for 2023 Liberty Fest fireworks display.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Gorninsky. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is G1, consider approval of the purchase of two Ford Maverick hybrids for building and inspection services.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of two 2023 Ford Maverick hybrids for building and inspection services from Gorno Ford at 22025 Allen Road, Woodhaven, Michigan, 48183, via the MyDeal or MI Deal contract, subject contract number in the amount of $55,942. Funding for this vehicle will come out of the subject account for capital outlay vehicles.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Building and Inspection Services has a need to purchase two new vehicles to replace a 2005 Ford Explorer with 120,532 miles, and a 2008 Ford Escape with 76,350 miles. These vehicles are used by the building inspectors daily. The Explorer, being 18 years old and having over 120,000 miles, fits all four categories of the Fleet Replacement Policy 607, as it is also in poor shape mechanically and cosmetically. The Escape, being 15 years old, and although it does not meet the mileage criteria, fits the other three replacement criteria, as it is also in poor shape mechanically and cosmetically. Fleet has obtained a quote from Gorno Ford for two 2023 Ford Maverick hybrids in the amount of $27,971 each. Total for both is $55,942. This amount is within the $60,000 budgeted by the department. The township will utilize the MyDeal contract as listed, pricing received from Gorno Ford. The vehicles that are proposed to be purchased have been evaluated for alternative fueling sources, including electric. It should be noted that these hybrid vehicles will be much more fuel efficient than the vehicles they are replacing. Achieving up to 40 miles per gallon in the city, this meets the goal of Canton Township by ensuring the fleet includes more fuel-efficient vehicles.
And let's see, Mr. Norwood, do you have any questions or comments? I'm sorry, comments?
Comment, we're very excited about this. We're transitioning the fleet, this is one of the steps. We also have another vehicle, an all-electric vehicle. But this is something that we were actually pursuing last year, but we couldn't find the vehicles at that time. But now we have. So we're very excited about bringing these into our fleet, and Fleet's ready to deal with them, all the maintenance on them. So I think we're going to be in good shape with this. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Michael?
What's going to happen to our Explorer and our 15-year-old Fusion?
So both those vehicles will be looked at by Fleet to see if they can go back into the, as pool vehicles. I don't know about the Explorer, but it's pretty rough, potentially.
Okay. I know one thing we're asking for next year is a township vehicle for going to our multiple drop boxes, which is something that we're going to be needing. So I was like, oh.
Yeah.
Don't toss out the Explorer just yet.
Nope, we're not going to toss anything away.
All right. Appreciate it.
I hear you.
Other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider special land use for automobile service station discount tires.
Madam Supervisor, I move to the board adopt the following resolution, the approval for the special land use of discount, for discount tire. Whereas, project sponsor has requested special land use approval for an automobile service station establishment use on the subject tax parcel at 5008 Research Drive, and whereas planning commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria, voted 8 to 0 to recommend approval with conditions, as the request meets the criteria of special land use approval in Section 27.03 Subsection C of the zoning ordinance, my favorite section. Now therefore be it resolved, the board of trustees, the charter township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the special land use for the automobile service station establishment use in planning, the subject planning application number on the subject tax parcel at 5008 Research Drive, as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, including any required plan corrections during site plan review.
Port.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The applicant proposes to construct an automobile service station establishment, discount tire at 5008 Research Drive, which is vacant on the parcels listed. The subject site is located on the southwest corner of Michigan Avenue and Research Drive between Beck Road and Bellville Road, and is located in the quadrants industrial Research Park. Subject site zone, site is zoned light industrial and automobile service station establishments are special land uses in the light industrial zoning district, subject to section 6.02C of the zoning ordinance. At its meeting on May 1st, 2023, Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval of a special land use, subject to conditions. If the special land use is approved, the next steps will be for the applicant to submit a site plan application. Uh, Dave, do you want to add anything?
I don't have anything else to add, uh, though the community planner, Patrick Sloan, is also here to answer any questions.
Summer, do you want to add anything?
Um, I will just mention, in the Planning Commission meeting, um, we mentioned that it would be nice if it had to, some electrical vehicle chargers, and I'd see that it added, that they added it to the plan, so thank you for that.
Patrick, do you have anything to add? Yeah, what are the, um, some of the conditions?
Um, sure, the only thing to add is with the electric vehicle charging stations, right now on the special land use plan, they're proposing the conduit to service those stations, and they're considering their options as they go into site plan review. So when the, if it's, the special land use is approved, the applicants will be back for site plan review, which will be reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the board, and, uh, electric vehicle charging station status can be finalized at that point.
Questions from the board or comments? Steven?
Patrick, in the Planning Commission minutes, I saw lots of talk about water and, um, man, water management. Um, can you comment on that?
Uh, sure. Um, on any project, uh, stormwater management is always a large, uh, topic, and typically with, uh, special land uses, the stormwater management system is conceptual on the plan until they get to site plan review, in which case, uh, it's engineered in much more detail. In the case of, uh, Research Drive, there's a pond on the east side of Research Drive, it's a large pond. Um, I think it probably shows up in the aerial photos there, and that pond is designed to service the entire development. And as developments are reviewed and approved, the stormwater management is under the jurisdiction of Wayne County, so if that pond is still sufficient for the stormwater management, the water will just run off, uh, underground and into that pond. Um, if it's not, then Wayne County will impose, um, any other requirements for onsite detention.
I think I see something being built up in that complex right now. Do you remember what that is?
Uh, yes, just to the south, uh, that's, uh, Loomis. Um, they're an armored car warehouse and distribution facility, and, um, that one, it's in the light industrial zoning district, and it complied with all standards of the zoning ordinance, and it was a permitted use. And because it's in a, at a light industrial zone, and it's a permitted use, if it complies with all standards, it's an administrative approval, instead of going to Planning Commission and Board. So that's why it didn't come before the Planning Commission and Board, but it does comply with all the zoning standards.
So it's not a retail operation in any way, that one? Okay. Thank you.
Tanya?
So I saw some comments about the big truck turns from Michigan Avenue to Research Drive. Um, is that something they are going to implement, or do, do they have to work with, uh, uh, MDOT, because Michigan Avenue is a state road?
I think if they widen a little bit on Research Drive, they show part of the Boulevard being taken out on Research Drive, so that they can make the truck turn into the site. I think that the, they will be able to do that based on their truck turning templates, and the project engineer thinks that they'll, they'll be able to do that and still be able to get the large trucks that they plan there to maneuver into the site.
And that, that will be during, you know, construction for discount tire? Or someone else does, is going to take care of that road? Just curious, whose responsibility that is?
Um, Research Drive, it's a, it's a private industrial road, so it will be up to the developer, and if there's a, uh, an association of owners, it'll, it, the road is under their jurisdiction. So they'll be, uh, they'll be working together on that. And part of the widening or the removal of portions of the Boulevard, uh, that will be reviewed in more detail during the engineering review, in terms of the construction, the restoration, and the geometry.
So we, as you know, that's going, you know, we're looking at creating the Michigan Avenue network, and I'm wondering, I also understand, Discount Tire, they sell specialized tires for electric vehicles. Is that going to be at this site also?
Uh, yes, we've asked the applicants about that, and, uh, they said that they're planning to stock, uh, in-service, uh, electric vehicle station, or electric vehicle tires at this Discount Tire. And on their website, they advertise their suppliers being nearby, so they have access to electric vehicle tires when they need to have them brought in. And, uh, according to the applicants, they intend to service electric vehicles at this location. And their website has a whole page dedicated to electric vehicle servicing.
At the Ford Road shop also, or just the, they're planning just for this one?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know about the Ford Road location. We can find out.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, consider approval of a three-year contract and two-year option with Land Matters for the acquisition of right-of-ways and easements to support the township sidewalk gap program and other township construction projects.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a three-year contract with Land Matters for an amount not to exceed $225,000 and authorize the township clerk to sign the contract on behalf of Canton Township, and to approve the attached, or the, the attached, um, budget amendment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The township has adopted a sidewalk gap program with the goal of filling in gaps in the sidewalk network throughout the township. A critical component of the sidewalk gap program is to secure rights of ways or easements to construct the sidewalks on property not controlled by the township. Additionally, the township has other infrastructure projects that may need to secure rights of ways or easements. These projects include, but are not limited to, water main replacement projects, intersection improvement projects, and extension of the township's trail network. The proposed vendor agreement with Land Matters arose from the procurement process applied to the state of Michigan Department of Transportation's MDOT Ford Road Boulevard Project. MDOT competitively bid for the same services as needed by the township through a process that complies with the township's bidding and purchasing policies, and Land Matters is proposing the same terms and rates as submitted for the Ford Road Boulevard Project. It is anticipated that securing the rights of way or easements will not exceed 15% of the total construction costs. Uh, Dave, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Uh, we're very excited about the, bringing on this, uh, this consultant to help us. Um, it's kind of the next step in the process of filling the gaps. Um, our first, there's a couple places where we'll be applying this, uh, by the high schools, by PSEP, uh, because that's one of our priority areas. Also, um, near Palmer and Lots, near the Crescent Academy, uh, where the township recently got some land from a, back taxes on Palmer, just east of Lot, so that's going to be part of our, our sidewalk gap filling in that, in that particular location. But we'll also be using, uh, this vendor for, there's some, sometimes we run into these issues on right-of-way with water main, too, um, where we have to move a water main, or we'd rather not move a water main, and, uh, this will be good for those type of, uh, situations.
How do we currently do it?
Well, in the past, uh, engineering has pursued it, uh, or staff time has done it, and it's fortunately taken them away from other projects that they're working on, so, uh, working in conjunction with the, the legal counsel.
Comments? Kate?
Um, Dave, would this also then, I, I saw intersection improvement projects listed as something this could help with, and since we have three intersections that we're looking at, working on, do you, do you foresee, um, this company helping with that also?
Yes, uh, certainly, you know, you've probably seen some of the, um, the flags out of Sheldon and Palmer, where we're working on a roundabout there, and there will be, will, looks like we'll have to get some right-of-way there. Also at Beck and Ford Road, um, we'll probably need some right-of-way there, too, and then eventually, when, when we figure out what, what the geometry's going to look at, at Sheldon Geddes and Michigan Avenue, um, there'll be some right-of-way, potentially give it up and, and potentially, um, pursuing.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider awarding a contract and purchase order for administration building renovations.
Supervisor, I move to approve the attached budget amendment and award the bid for the administration building renovations to the Albert M. Higley Company at 719 Griswold Street, Detroit, Michigan, 48226, in an amount of $485,245.25 for the administration building renovations.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. As a part of the board directive, facilities partnered with A3C Collaborative Architecture to develop and design office renovations for the township administration building. The following locations will receive renovations. ITI Department to accommodate additions to the department, CLS to accommodate the reorganization of the department, water billing for functional layout and consistency, and treasurers, Dropbox to be ADA compliant, and remedy safe concerns. Director, or, I'm sorry, Deputy Dave.
No, I, I don't have any new to add, but, uh, John Zinus and his team, who will be executing this project.
They like the name Deputy Dave.
Deputy Dave, I know.
As long as it's not pejorated.
I've been called worse, but, uh, but John's here to talk if you have questions about the project, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments? John, do you want to add anything? Director John? No, okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace tile at the Summit on the Park and Victory Park Ball Field lights and renovations pursuant to the 2019 Capital Improvement Plan.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award a contract and purchase order to AM Higley in the amount totaling $5,527,403.30 to renovate tile at the Summit on the Park Pool Facility. The project's scope includes the lat pool, family pool, spa, sauna, pool deck, men's locker room, women's locker room, and family locker room, also to replace light poles and lights at Victory Park Pavilion Roof Replacement, fence and backstop replacement, window glazings, carpentry work. Further authorize the township supervisor or clerk to sign the contracts on behalf of the Charter Township of Canton, and to award a purchase order to V-Vegas, Vigis, Vegas Tile Company, I apologize if anyone's watching from that company, um, in the amount totaling $794,781 for the installation of the new tile, and to award a purchase order to Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of 1.5, 1 mil, 1,547,600 for the cast concrete bases with integrated lighting grounding, 33 60-inch galvanized steel poles, or feet, I guess, 357, uh, factory-aimed and assembled luminaires, including ball tracker luminaires.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. In 2019, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan, and subsequently, the township issued capital improvement bonds to fund the CIP. The CIP includes renovating the tile at the Summit on the Park Pool. Specifically, the project's scope includes a lat pool, family pool, spa, sauna, pool deck, men's locker room, women's locker room, and family locker room. Additionally, Victory Park is also being recommended for improvements under the CIP portfolio. Victory Park will undergo ball field light upgrades, transitioning to all LEDs for energy efficiency, as well as enhancing quality of play and replacing 33 light poles for safety and functionality purposes. So I think everybody there is listed on this one, so who wants to comment on it?
Big scope of this project, lots of, lots of moving parts. Um, John Z, John Zlinus is also here to answer questions with his team, um, who's going to be implementing and executing on the project. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Comment? No? In this one, we followed the, um, responsible contracting, right? Right?
Yes.
Questions or comments? Tanya, I think.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Is this the first time that we are doing this tile replacement after the summit was built, or?
This is, yes, the current Summit tile is original. Um, there's some walls in the aquatics locker rooms that were renovated, um, prior to, but everything else is original to the building.
Um, the second question I had was about the, the park lighting. Uh, is this, again, is this the first time we are doing, replacing it?
Yeah, um, to my knowledge, I, uh, the township purchased the property from the county, years in the eighties, I believe, somewhere around there, um, and that is original from that, that timeframe. Um, so you can imagine what the underground infrastructure we're dealing with, too. Um, so that's why I think we have a lot of, um, rezoning some of the underground infrastructure to make it more functional, as well as to get the GPS mapping on that, so we have a blueprint currently. Um, we don't have a blueprint of what's underground. Um, so this will give us the ability to do it the right way, and to have a map for future projects, um, so we, we can have that on hand as well.
Uh, my next question is not to you, but, uh, to John Lefebvre, is like, do we know how much, like, you know, um, we are investing a lot in the, you know, the park that's being used quite a bit, so do we have, like, I don't need the answer right now, but do we have an estimate of, like, do we get a certain amount of revenue and how much that is?
Absolutely, yeah. Uh, in addition to revenue numbers, we were able to work with our friends at Cobalt and pull some usage figures of how many people the Canton Sports Center draws on an annual basis. Uh, along with that, we did some economic impact analysis, too. So that facility really serves, uh, not just Canton residents, but really as a regional draw. We're, we have tournaments every weekend from April to October, uh, you know, youth sports, you name it, multiple uses. We, we have field rentals, um, you know, seven days a week, so huge draw for the region, uh, great, great benefit, and I always say it's a, a huge anchor to all the great development that's happened along Michigan Avenue, so, uh, definitely I can share that report with you and any of the board members that are interested.
Also, to answer the initial question about responsible contracting, um, everyone has been interviewed and scored appropriately, and the, the contractors selected reflect responsible contracting. They're all in a line.
But that includes subcontractors also, then?
Correct, yep.
Yes, um, thank you. So the, the summit's going to be shut down, and, um, I am assuming that the tile work will be done during that time, right?
Correct. Uh, we're aiming for August 1st.
And then, um, a while ago, we had a, um, study session about CIP projects, and we did talk about the, some of the lighting at Victory Park, and there were safety concerns there, and, um, will this address those concerns?
Yes, it will. So the reason, another one of the reasons, we're, we're pretty close to on-budget for that one, but we are over. Um, so the initial, um, replacement of light poles called for category one. Category one light poles are the ones, zero to one-year replacement. Uh, I believe there was nine to 12 of those, uh, and that study was done by Manic Smith. Uh, we also did another study with Manic Smith back in 2022. Um, category one and category, or category four and three, um, were aligned into those to be replaced for safety concerns. Category four and three, three was, um, a five to seven-year, um, replacement. Um, so we lumped category four and three into this, getting, resulting in the 33 light poles, uh, for safety concerns. Um, your other categories are 20 to 25-year lifespan, um, and that's the warranty we will get with Musco Lighting for all the light poles and the infrastructure. Um, since we're doing over 50% of the light pole replacements, um, 33 out of the 52, we will obtain the 25-year warranty from them.
Thank you.
John, um, I gotta ask, what is, um, ball tracking luminaries?
So the ball tracking luminaries are about halfway up on the poles, the light poles, the 33, a little bit, maybe a little less, and they, they're uplighting. Um, so they're not vision down, or they're not in the batter's eye, or fielder's eyes, so they're tracking the ball as it goes up into the sky. Um, I haven't had too much experience with them, uh, but I have a lot of positive feedback through other communities that have, have used them. Um, and it's, it's just a neat feature, and it comes on the pole standard, so it's, it's almost a little bit of a benefit for us to, to have those.
Cool. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Michael?
Um, thank you. Yeah, I always get a little bit of sticker shock whenever we spend money, um, and I was, had a hard time initially, um, with this, um, project. What, what's interesting is, um, I, at the city of the township, I, uh, was sitting next to Van Buren Township Supervisor, Kevin McNamara, and they... and they used a lot of their ARPA money with, in conjunction with the county's ARPA money to build their own community center. But they were not able to put a pool in because the cost of building a brand-new pool was so substantially cost prohibitive that they could not do that. And when you look at something like the Summit Aquatic Center and you talk about what it would cost to build something like that from scratch today, it's astronomical. And so when you look at the amount of money we're kind of putting in here to prolong and renew that facility, it really does make sense to keep an asset, to keep it in good, in good standing, and to keep it well. Because sometimes you can be penny wise and pound foolish. And so, yeah, I'm in favor of this today. No questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider award of CDBG housing rehabilitation contracts.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the two housing rehabilitation contracts to optimum contracting and structure tech restoration listed below totaling $50,000. We are also requesting to refund all the permit fees once the work has been completed and approved by the building department.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Under Canton's Affordable Housing Program, federal dollars are used to pay for major and minor repairs to owner-occupied, single-family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements. Formal bid procedures were followed and the public bid opening was held on May 4, 2023 for the CDBG housing rehab program. Bids are received from four vendors. We are requesting to approve contracts for multiple HUD CDBG-funded home rehabilitation projects that exceed the $10,000 purchasing threshold. Let's see, Wendy, do you have anything to add?
I don't. This is kind of part of our status quo CDBG rehabilitation program that we did. It's nice to see that we had four contractors respond. Typically, we've been getting one, maybe two. So it's kind of nice to see that we're getting a little bit more competition and more people interested in helping with these homes. So that's, that's a positive for us right now. But otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just wondering how we find families or individuals that qualify for this?
Most of, most of it is available just on our website. They apply, we actually have a waitlist of quite a few residents. I think they end up word of mouth, you know, talking to their friends. I'd have to look to see what the waitlist is right now. We have to work with our building department to try to prioritize what the important items are as far as making their houses inhabitable. Sometimes, you know, they're like, oh, we want it, we need a new kitchen. Well, but you need a new roof. And we have $25,000 to work with. So we actually work with our building department, who goes through to figure out what safety requirements we really have to put into a house before we can do the want. So, you know, if we put a list together, we put it out to bid and it comes back at $40,000, the building department helps whittle it back down to the $25,000 mark. Or we come back to the board to ask for expanded scope if we really need to address some safety issues. On top of that, we sometimes get the same people coming back for a second round. But we tend to, unless there's, again, a big safety issue at the home, we want to get everybody through who has not yet had the opportunity to participate. So it's a really good program. We get a lot of, a lot of residents who want to do it. We've had, you know, a few complaints come through because they want their work done sooner or maybe it wasn't enough. But otherwise, we've got a lot of satisfied and happy people. So it's a good program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G7, request approval to create the GIS Coordinator and Asset Management Specialist Positions.
Madam Supervisor, I move to increase the general fund headcount by one by, by creating the GIS Coordinator position and to approve the creation of the Asset Management Specialist, which will replace the Asset Management Supervisor position and to approve the attached budget amendment to account for the approximately six months of salary for the GIS Coordinator position.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The current Asset Management Supervisors retiring on June 30, 2023. There's an increasing need for the overall management, centralization, and maintenance of the township's GIS data operations. Both ITI and MSD departments have expressed a need for a dedicated position to fulfill the expanding GIS needs of the township. May 8, 2023, the Mayor Commission approved the job descriptions for two newly created positions in the ITI and MSD departments. The ITI department position is for a geographical information system coordinator and the MSD position is for an Asset Management Specialist. We'll start with you, Victor, do you have anything to add?
So over the years, we've been able to analyze the operation of the GIS, GIS personnel for the entire township. And we've worked with MSD to make sure that we sort of recalibrate the whole, where the functions are laid out. And having a GIS Coordinator position that will sit over the entire operation of GIS will allow us to do things better in a way that we haven't done before because the function of GIS cuts across all departments. It's not just something that is just for DPW. It cuts across even public safety, cuts across, you know, everything that the township does. And so we want to make sure that we establish the protocol and the standard that is required so that the need for GIS is fully met across the township. So it's very important for us to know that an individual with the expertise that can sit in that role will be able to help guide us and navigate. And so that's one part. The other part is to sort of reclassify the old position that will really, really meet the needs of DPW. So these two positions will sort of reshape how we function to help us move forward in a way that we can bring about better results for Canton Township.
Director Victor, Dave, do you have anything to add for the other position?
We're pretty excited about this change. So this, Victor's correct, it is a kind of an evolution of GIS in how the township is using this tool. So in MSD, it's very important when you have an interaction between the public works function and the planning function. So we want to make sure those move smoothly and they work together closely. So we're very excited about this opportunity to bring somebody on who can tackle this, kind of this way, the way we're looking at, instead of in the past. Just, it's an evolution.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
I know, okay. One of the positions just retired, right, Dave Maurice? And I also noticed that I think around the time that he retired, we had a maps portal, GIS maps portal that was available on the website. I just can't find it anywhere. And I typically use that as a parcel map. Is that down because of this transition? Would that come back up at some future time?
I've used it in the last few days.
Okay. Can you send me the link to it? That'd be fantastic. I also got a new laptop and I used to have it saved on my tabs. And Victor commandeered my laptop and won't give it back to me. So I don't have access to anything I used to use. I'm a mess. Canton Township, this is your clerk.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G8, consider approval of the addition of a full-time Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialist Position for Leisure Services Community Development.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the addition of the Recreation Specialist, Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialist Position and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
The Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The township has a wonderful opportunity to expand its program and services in the therapeutic recreation for individuals with disabilities. This has been made possible through secured funding by the Wayne County Commission, as well as the Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network. As a result of this additional funding, Canton is able to add an additional full-time position to assist in the growth of therapeutic recreation programming for Western Wayne County. On May 8, the Mayor Commission approved the proposed job description and factor analysis for the Recreation Specialist, Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialist. As a result, Leisure Services is requesting the approval of this new position. Let's see, so who's on this one, I'm sorry. So that would be, John, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. We, we're very excited. This, this wouldn't be possible without the advocacy that's been done for our therapeutic rec program. And so with, with your approval tonight, we'll be able to add Recreation Specialist, which has been quite some time since we've done that as a direct result of the funding we've received from the county and from Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, D-Win. And that, that's huge. It's huge for our residents, it's huge for our participants with disabilities. And this, this will be a great way for us to grow that really in-demand program. There's a need right now that we're just not able to serve as many participants that would like to participate in our program. So doing this will help us get closer to that goal of serving everyone who needs it and wants it.
Summer?
A comment. I love this program. I've heard great things about it for members of the community and I'm so happy that we are able to work with partners at the county to expand it right here in Canton Township. So great work on everyone who made this happen.
Anya?
Yeah, I concur with Summer and I just want to commend John for advocating for it at the Western Wayne Conference and, you know, bringing in additional funding and continuing with the funding. So thank you, John, for continuing advocating for this program.
It really wouldn't be able to happen without the support of the Supervisor's Office and going to bat with, with the county for us. So I, we're very excited, the staff are ecstatic.
Michael?
Yeah, I, Canton Cable put together an amazing, kind of highlighted what the program is. And when, when you guys presented that to the Conference of Western Wayne, it was beautiful. Because it's like, you can understand, you can talk about what the program is, but you really don't get it until you see it. And when you do, it's like, it's amazing. And this is one of the things, I think, one of the things that makes me the most proud to be a member of the Board of Trustees is this program. It's a shining jewel for Western Wayne County or all of Wayne County. You, you know, John, obviously you worked tirelessly, but also, Madam Supervisor, your office in kind of giving him the freedom to do that. And, you know, really watching as the other leaders from the other communities bought in to what we do and the county buying into what we do. And then seeing us put it, put the money that we received to good use, which is hiring somebody. And then I, I know that we're also looking at finding a permanent home for this program, which is really, just solidifies it, creates some stability in it. And I just, I'm extremely grateful that you took it up and that you've been advocating tirelessly for this program. It's phenomenal, so this is great. And this is a great pickup, too.
Thank you. I know that Supervisor Van Buren also helped us because he is our representative on D-Win. Kate?
Yeah, I echo what everyone else has been saying. Thank you, John, for bringing this to us tonight. And thank you, Anne Marie, for your hard work on this. You know, I have a young adult at my house who went to Camp Abel when he was a teenager and it was wonderful for him. And it was, it's one of the therapeutic recreation programs that we have. And, you know, it, it means a lot to families that there's places where their family members can go and be accepted and be normal. So this is really wonderful. There were three things on the agenda tonight that I was super excited about and this was one of them. So appreciate it.
I'll just add, echo what everybody said and just add that I'm proud of administration and the board for the goals that we've set for this community. And this is just another action that we're taking that meets one of, one of those goals of serving underserved portions of our community. So thanks for making it happen.
All of Western Wayne and it's fun to go watch the program if anyone ever has any time.
This is the one program that we offer that has no residency requirements because of that, because of the funding. And I'm, I'm also proud of that because there are a lot of residents that need this. So getting the funding from the county really allows us to serve, serve the many. And it's awesome, it's awesome that we're able to do it. Very proud of our community for doing that.
Great, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G9, consider authorization of bid award for the 2023 bus transportation.
Madam Supervisor, I move to award the 2023 Bus Transportation Services to National Trails LLC, LLC, 11940, Maryam Road, La Vona, Michigan, 4150, in the amount not to exceed $26,040 from the attached counts.
Support.
By Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. Bids were solicited for summer camp bus services with five companies submitting bids. First Student Charter Bus Rental, BDL Worldwide, Great Lakes Transportation Holding LLC, DBA Metro Cards, Golden Limousine Incorporated, and National Trails. The lowest bid was provided by National Trails LLC at a cost of 62 per hour and a total cost of $26,040, including a contingency for extra buses. Leisure Services is recommending awarding the bid to National Trails LLC. See, John, do you have anything to add on this one?
Bill trips are a huge part of our summer programs, as you all know. Couple of these programs that are listed on here are therapeutic rec camps that we offer, different age groups, younger children, and then youth and older adults as well. So, yeah, just a huge service for all of our camps that we offer throughout the summer.
Comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G10, consider approval of a purchase order for Sound and Lighting Support Services for the 2023 Liberty Festival.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize a purchase order in the amount of $28,340 from the account number listed for professional and contractual services, special event.
Let's show, here's some Kleenex.
Sorry. For Great Lakes Sound Incorporated, 230, Arco Drive, Toledo, Ohio, 43607.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. In April 2023, a request for proposals was solicited for Sound and Lighting Support Services for Canton's Liberty Festival. One proposal was received from Great Lakes Sound Incorporated in the amount of $28,340. The proposal includes audio and lighting services for three days on two separate stages, the amphitheater and mobile Canton live stage. Great Lakes Sound provided these services for Liberty Festival in 2022 where they performed admirably. Due to their experience and qualified proposal, Leisure Services is recommending the approval of a purchase order for the Sound and Lighting Support Services for the 2023 Liberty Festival to Great Lakes Sound Incorporated. John, Director John, do you have anything to add?
Twenty-three days away. Liberty Festival is coming fast. I know the community is excited and so are we. So looking, looking forward to another great year.
Questions or comments?
Not that I'm counting.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G11, consider approval of budget adjustments. Consider approval of printing and publishing legal budget adjustment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
I wasn't sure if you were done.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The increase of cost of publishing printed papers has created a need for additional funds in the printing and publishing legal budget. The Clerk's office is requesting the board approval of budget amendment of $25,000 using available fund balance as it is necessary to cover the increased publishing costs for the remainder of 2023. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add anything?
I'm willing to answer any questions.
Out of curiosity, what has this run in the past?
Historically, in this account, the number has been zero because this account was never in the Clerk's office until 2023. It was in general government. And historically, it, when we took office, when I took office in 2016, it was around $14,000, $15,000 annually. We whittled it down to about $11,000, which has consistently been about $11,000 the last couple of years with the loss of people turning to local newspapers for information. We have found ways to mitigate the financial obligation of the township by looking directly at what the law requires us to publish and what it doesn't. So we've removed some of the unnecessary publishings. With the loss of The Observer and The Eagle in physical print form, they no longer meet the definition of a newspaper under state law. We have had to go to Public Notice Weekly, which is three times more expensive than The Observer. Substantially cheaper than every other alternative, but substantially more expensive than our previous alternatives. So unfortunately, till the legislature can get rid of it. alternatives. So unfortunately, till the legislature can get rid of this dinosaur of a law, we are forced to spend more money on printing and publishing.
That's interesting. At CWW, they brought that up. They said if they were going to change it to online, they'd have to open up like 91 acts, which...
Yeah, I don't know who said that, but I would disagree with them. I believe that you would just open up the one act, which is the newspaper act of 1963.
They said that it touched all these acts in different ways, like...
Sure does.
So they said by, by doing it, if they had to open it, it would, then when an act is open, they have to jump, people would jump in and change a lot of things.
You have to change all of the other laws that the law is mentioned in. So, I mean, it's, it takes some work, and LSB is backed up, and, but it can be done.
It can definitely be done. It's not a priority, which I understand.
It'd be great if Act 51 was kind of one of those acts, too, right?
I was, I was in Lansing today having meetings about things that are priorities to clerks, but not to people in the legislature. It's, it sucks.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G 12, consideration of first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 50, Article 1, Section 50-3, Open Space and Nature Area Preservation, and Article 2, Section 50-31, Definitions, Parks and Recreation of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce for a first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 50, Article 1, Section 50-3, Open Space and Nature Area Preservation, and Article 2, Section, that's a typo, Section 50-31, Definitions, Parks and Recreation.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. The board is being asked to adopt an amendment to Chapter 50 of the Canton Code of Ordinances, Parks and Recreation to allow for the creation of a nature area designation to preserve and protect open space, natural habitats, and green space for the benefit of residents and in cooperation with the greater Canton community. The proposed language would allow the board to designate nature areas and maintain an interest in the land to provide limitation on land or body of water and prohibits excessive improvements, restricting it to open space usage for the benefit of the residents of the township, prohibit a nature area to be subdivided, developed, or excessive improvements to alter the general nature, natural value of the land. Clerk Seeger, did you want to comment on this one?
I'm willing to answer any questions, but essentially, this would just amend the ordinance to allow for a local preservation status known as nature area solely for township-owned property to be approved by the board and designated by the board. Could be removed by a two-thirds roll call vote of the board. And it would not allow for, quote, "excessive improvements," and the ordinance amendment identifies excessive improvement of any change to the nature of the land greater than 10%. So if it's a 130-acre parcel of land, you would essentially have 13 acres that you could either subdivide, sell off at any point in time, or you could create for active recreation, and you would not alter the nature area preservation status.
I'm going to just add one thing here that was under the background also. The 2019 Community Needs Assessment Survey, which you've written, top issues facing Canton: aging population, 32%, environmental sustainability, 30%, reason for using Canton's parks. Residents said physical fitness, 45%, and time outdoors, 44%. And then they also said preferred engagement opportunities with nature, walking and biking trails, 54%, and natural preserves and natural trails. So this will help to accomplish that. Any questions or comments from the board members?
A quick comment that I love this so much.
I'm assuming we're doing this because of the next one, yeah? Is that true? Or is they not related? They are, how we develop it. The only question I have is, I know of a nature preserve at Sheldon and Warren.
Sheldon and Warren, yes.
Is that, did we, how did we do that one? I mean, none of us were here then, but...
Well, so technically not a nature preserve.
Okay.
But definitely, there's, I don't know if any of the directors could answer that question better than I could. I know it was done in conjunction with the Alliance of Rouge Communities. I know that that could be a potential candidate for nature area number two as designated by the Board of Trustees, but I would let somebody else kind of speak to that. I don't know if Director, Deputy Director Norwood, or Director LaFever have anything to add to that?
Yeah, not a whole lot to add. I just know it was set aside, as, as Clerk Seeger said, set aside as a nature area and preserved as such. So that area is untouched, right? So there's, there's not any, you know, you're not going to find any paths there, walking paths, unless they've been created by, by those living in the area, which I know some back up to it. But that is strictly set aside for, for nature preservation.
That's, I have walked by that area, and I don't think there is any paths in there that can...
No, I knew it wasn't accessible except for by animals, which is great. But it is, it's, I thought there was a sign there that called it a nature preserve. That is our land. It's by township property. Okay.
Yeah, there is a cool interpretive sign there that talks about the project there. It, it's really good, I believe, stormwater detention for, is it the Tonkish Creek that goes through there? And I know in the past, we talked about there's the parcel catty corner from it that routinely comes up, and nobody can really develop because of the setback and the access. And that could potentially be, would be another opportunity for, for something like that, a, a cool project like that.
Excited to see us use this more and more. So, great.
Remember that particular one, I used to live in Sheldon and Warren. I think that one started like in 1998.
Was it?
Yeah. Kate?
Like Summer, I'm super happy and excited about this. This is number two of three that I was excited about tonight.
I wonder what the next one is.
I just wanted to thank Michael Seeger for all of his hard work on this. And also, this is something that I think has been lacking in the township, and we really needed to do this because we should have nature areas. We should. So this is, this is a good thing to do.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item G 13, consideration of resolution naming ZBOS Nature Area and establishing Canton Nature Society to act as informal caretaker.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the attached resolution, approval of a resolution naming ZBOS Nature Area and establishing Canton Nature Society to act as informal caretaker. Whereas Charter Township of Canton is a desirable place to live, work, and visit, in large part due to the presence of farmland and other open space lands. Whereas the region continues to experience substantial residential development pressure because of the social, cultural, and educational benefits of proximity to the cities of Ann Arbor, Detroit, and other urbanized areas in southeast Michigan. Whereas the development, development has affected the quality of life in Canton, leading to fragmented open space and wildlife habitat, loss of productive farmland and forest land, destruction of rural beauty, and the loss of wetlands. Whereas removing, in removing the name Patriot Park from the proposed nature area at Ford and Ridge, the Board of Trustees indicated it wanted to deviate from the current naming regime of revolutionary or pioneering terms and pay homage to inhabitants of the land prior to European settlement. Whereas before the French and British came in the, in the 1600s, Michigan was home to several tribes. Michigan's three largest tribes are the Ojibwe, Ottawa, and Potawatomi. Whereas the Pokagon Band of Potawatomi Indians' Representation Outreach Board voted to recommend the name ZBOS for the parcel designated to be honored, which means creek. Whereas since 2009, Canton residents have indicated that they prefer larger, more passive public spaces, and as recent as 2019, indicated that walking and biking trails and nature preserves and nature trails were the two most desirable outdoor engagement opportunities. Whereas communities like Royal Oak and Troy have partnered with nonprofit community organizations to help provide nature, education, and recreational opportunities. And whereas the Board of Trustees has established healthy environment as one of its strategic goals, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees as Charter Township of Canton does hereby name the subject parcel at Ford and Ridge Roads, ZBOS Nature Area, and calls for the establishment of the Canton Nature Society to act as informal caretakers for the preserve in conjunction with the township.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Bruninsky. The board is being asked to consider designating Canton's first nature area and naming the land located at the corner of Ridge and Ford Roads, ZBOS Nature Area. As Canton works to deliver a new pocket park at Fire Station 2, is currently undergoing improvements at Heritage Park, and delivers massive upgrades to the Town Square Project at Cherry Hill Village in partnership with Wayne County, a new approach to public space development is required. The 134-acre parcel offers a partnership model that can help acknowledge public input, asking for more passive nature opportunities for residents, while ensuring the township budget isn't overburdened by the financial cost of operating another 100-plus acre large park like Heritage Park. Under the new ordinance, a portion, which is 13 acres, of the new nature area can be designated for active recreation. This resolution would direct community development to work on a concept that delivers an active park near the east entrance while helping construct the framework for a nature preserve and future arboretum to be under the stewardship of both leisure services, leisure services and the Canton Nature Society. The township has secured $1 million in funding with the help of Congresswoman Haley Stevens in the December 2022 omnibus spending package. Additionally, the board has identified a matching $1 million from the American Rescue Plans Act appropriation for this parcel to help cultivate a public space. So I like some of the background information, too.
Go on, you're reading.
Since the early 70s, Canton has embraced an effective parks approach and philosophy that has served the community well. Canton's philosophy has been to encourage the development of neighborhood parks through open space requirements and new housing projects, while the township provides larger parks for active recreation. Canton has developed nine parks encompassing 677 acres. Canton also has 147 acres of undeveloped future park land, including the Ridge Road Park property. The first large active-use park developed was Griffin, located in the eastern portion of Canton, which was then followed by Flodden Park, Heritage Park, Freedom Park, and Independence Park. Land for the park was purchased in 2000 with grant funds from the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund. The land is comprised of a mix of old farmland, wetlands, and woods. As part of this 2021 planning process, a new vision for the future design of Ridge Road Park has been articulated by the community, calling for a largely passive and natural park area. So that's great. I think this is great. And do you want to add anything else, Michael? I think we've said...
That flowery language I actually copy and pasted from the Leisure Services five-year master plan, so I can't take credit for all of that.
Great.
But I think it speaks to the fact that we've got phenomenal staff who have already been kind of delivering on this, this vision and, and putting a lot of time and energy into it. I know that community development has met with partners in architecture on some, some type of design concept for the area. I'm super excited to see what, what they come up with. But yeah, I think it's, I think it's slick, and it'll be nice once the ordinance is established where we can actually formally create the nature area and not just name it.
Right. And what's, also what's great is that Senator Stabenow's office helped us contact the Indian tribe that we worked with to name it. So thank you to Senator Stabenow's office. And they were, they often held their own meeting, and that was very cool, too. It was a cool process. All right. Anyone, other comments or questions? Tanya, start down there.
Yeah, so Kate said there are three things on the agenda that was exciting today. I think I was very excited about this one. In April, we came to know the name of the park, and it was very nice to get the Native American tribe to actually name this for us. And we are very thankful for that. And it basically pays homage to the people that have lived here before us. So, thank you, Michael, and thank you, Supervisor's Office. Very excited.
Summer?
I just want, really want to applaud the process of involving Native American groups in coming up with the name. It would have been a lot easier probably to come up with a name on our own and say this is what it is. But recognizing that we are on indigenous land, it is important to give indigenous folks some say in how we name and recognize this land. So I just really want to applaud the process for that. And, you know, I think this sets an incredible precedent for this community, and I love the direction that we're going.
Yes, so this is three of three, and I love it. What everybody else said is, is exactly what I'm thinking. Also, I want to sign up for Canton Nature Society like right now. So how can we make that happen?
Get the legal documents in order first.
Echo what everybody said. I would love to see continued involvement from the Native American community, especially in terms of maybe signage and things like that. I know there's not going to be a lot there, but for what is there, I, I would love it to have that feel.
Maybe we could have a dedication ceremony.
Yes, to be invited. So the Indian tribe did say they want to be at the ribbon cutting and part of the celebration of the opening.
Awesome. All right.
What was cool, too, is just to let everybody know, I mean, they wanted land, they looked at maps, they looked at the, the river, the water going through, the foliage, the, the animals that were there. They want to know, and that's how they came up with the name, is by studying all of that and bringing it to the, the tribal board. Very cool. All right, great.
Can I ask a question of you, Madam Supervisor? And I believe you did ask Kyle Mala, I believe, who is the representative from that outreach commission, to assist with signage and some additional stuff. And he did indicate that he would do that, correct?
Right.
You have a vested interest in a partnership, so it's pretty cool.
Yep, very cool.
Pretty cool.
All right. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item G 14.
Yeah.
Canton Township-wide holiday.
Wait, may I just take a point of privilege real quick? Can I ask if, are we approving, is this the resolution to adopt it and then to approve a budget adjustment? Wendy? I see the language of the budget adjustment. I just don't see the, the language for approving a budget adjustment under the model resolution for G 14. I just want to make sure this is not...
I believe there is a budget adjustment. There was supposed to be part of it. There's a budget adjustment.
Okay, I just didn't see the language that said approve the budget adjustment. So I just worried that it was a copy paste error.
It does appear that that was left out, but please.
All right, no worries. Okay. Now I'm ready. Sorry. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the adoption of Juneteenth as a township-wide holiday to be observed on June 19th and to approve the attached budget adjustment.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. On January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation declaring all persons held as slaves and the rebellious Confederate states are free. However, not every slave in the Confederate territory was granted their freedom immediately. In the westernmost Confederate state of Texas, the state's 250,000 slaves were not freed until June 19th, 1865, when 2,000 Union troops arrived in Galveston Bay, Texas and declared by executive decree their freedom. On June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed the bill making Juneteenth the 11th American federal holiday and the first to obtain legal observance as a federal holiday since Martin Luther King Jr. Day was designated in 1983. So that was Director, Deputy Supervisor isn't here. Do we have any questions from the board on this one or comments? Kate?
So this would have been number four if I was doing four. But I just want to say, what took us so long? We knew we could have done this before.
We had an event last year.
Yes, we're having an event this year also. But we, you know, it's been almost two years, so, since it became a, you know, federal holiday.
Actually, it's interesting because our TPOAM union added into their contract.
Yeah.
That kind of was a domino effect for all the other unions that we...
Yeah, I just want to thank, you know, TPOAM for bringing this up during contract negotiations because it really accelerated this process. I think that's fantastic. I think that's cool, and I'm excited about this. You know, I think commemorating the, the last day that individuals were enslaved in this country is, is, when I think about history that is worth preserving, that is the history that is worth preserving. That is what is worth celebrating. And I think it's also important to say that sometimes when the law changes, practice doesn't necessarily change until culture requires it. So I think that's something everyone should think about. So, I think that's something everyone should think about sometimes. This is really, it is a long time coming, but I'm glad it's here.
At our main stage at the Liberty Festival, we will be celebrating it, Juneteenth, again. A big program coming. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G15, consider appointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Canton Township Board of Trustees appoint Gurveer Singh and Darshan Patel to serve on the Board of Directors of Downtown Development Authority of the Charter Township of Canton for a four-year term beginning May 23rd, 2022/23, and ending May 23rd, 2028.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. The Downtown Development Authority Board needs two business representatives to fill vacancies left by two individuals who are unable to fulfill their obligation to the Board. The Boards and Commissions Interview Committee recommends Gurveer Singh, owner of Singh Medical Supplies, and Darshan Patel, owner of Pizza Wallace, for appointment to the DDA Board. So, we had an interview committee. Kate, or Summer, if you want to say anything?
They both were very, very solid candidates, very much interested in giving back to the community, so I appreciated their willingness to serve.
I agree with everything Trustee Borninski said. I think it was great to hear, you know, their commitment to the community and wanting to get more engaged and involved in the community and working on the DDA as a way to do that. I think it's always been a little difficult in recruiting some business owners to serve on the DDA Board, but I'm glad we're able to recruit some new folks with some new energy.
All those in favor of the motion, oh, Michael?
I would like to say that the Clerk's office are big fans of Pizza Walla.
Oh, really?
If you're watching.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G16, consider FOIA appeal.
Madam Supervisor, I move to deny the appeal in full.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Friday, May 5th, 2023, the Supervisor's Office received an emailed FOIA appeal from Mr. Donald Phillips in regards to the denial of his FOIA request 23-341. We are asking the Board to consider this appeal to the denial issued on May 4th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Michael?
Would like to point out, so I don't typically participate in FOIA appeals or FOIA denials that is done by the deputy clerk, although because the deputy supervisor isn't here, our position, one, I think, the appeal letter actually references the wrong exemption statute, so the individual who had filed the appeal was appealing the wrong section of statute that we used to deny. That said, the denial we used is, there's a denial exemption in the Freedom of Information Act, which is subsection 1S49, and that is the personnel records of public safety officers. One of the reasons we do this, especially under today's hiring practices and the reality that we are in, is that the issuance of personnel records, specifically discipline records, could hinder the township's ability to hire and discipline law enforcement officers and hold people truly accountable. So, the public interest in disclosure in this instance did not outweigh the public interest in non-disclosure. You know, sometimes it is the case that we want to be transparent and give information out, but this is not one of those cases. Additionally, the request is for personnel records that go back to 2013, and many of them are for retired police officers, and there's another exemption, which is, if it's exempt under disclosure, for disclosure under other sections of law, you can't give it out, and the Blurb Pueki Employment Act says that an employer shall not give out personnel records that are over four years old. So, it is unlawful for us to give out personnel records or discipline, specifically discipline records, that are over four years old. So, there's a section of law that really requires we don't give this information out, and that's in Blurb Pueki, and then the Freedom of Information Act additionally gives us the ability to kind of take this balancing test internally and determine, is it better for the public to give information out or to withhold it? And so, in this instance, the recommendation from Corporation Counsel, from legal, and from the FOIA coordinator is to deny in full.
Anyone else on staff want to comment? No? Okay. Any questions or comments?
I was just going to ask if our legal counsel had looked at this, but Michael just said yes.
Quite excessively, yep. Both the internal counsel and then we had, they had, I was not involved because I don't play a role in any of that, but they had a conversation with our, the township attorneys, which is the firm Foster and Swift, and Ann Cernick is the specialist who handles those records and FOIA questions.
Tanya?
Yeah, I agree with what Michael said. I also had a conversation with the internal counsel, and when it comes to FOIA information, you know, as a board, we can deny or agree to the appeal, but the public safety actually outweighs the public interest disclosures, so, and as Michael mentioned, the other act that these... Four years old, so I will vote on denying this appeal.
All those in favor of the denial say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, great. What do we have next? Did the payment of bills, so at this point, do we have any comments or questions from staff members?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, I know that Director Jade Smith is on, and he has a couple of comments. He's online, so.
Okay, oh, go ahead, Jade.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that I'm away this evening because I'm at the APWA Conference, which is the American Public Works Association Conference. We were the first organization in the state of Michigan to be accredited by this organization, and I'm there representing them, but I know we had a packed agenda tonight, and a lot of those items related to MSD, so I just wanted to make sure that I commended the other departments that we work with, which is CLS in regards to those, the agenda items with regards to the CSC and also the summit. You know, we are an executor in those endeavors, so I appreciate the Board approving those tonight, although the bids were kind of out of our hands, but we were closely with them. So, I want to make sure that that was also just, you know, was mentioned. And then also, the, I wanted to talk about the cross connection. I know there has been some concerns about the cross connection communication that went out, and there were some letters that went out on April 29th in regards to adhering to the cross connection program, and there were some deadlines for the community that they needed to respond by then with either an inspection or work being done, and we have been working with the post office in Canton Township, and for whatever reason, we don't have an answer yet, but those communications were delayed. So, there are, there are residents in the township which have received these notices, and they are receiving basically about a 15 to 20-day turnaround notice in regards to come to compliance with the cross connection program, and we wanted to just let everybody know that that is not, there is no hard set date on that. We have to have some sort of date in regards to come into compliance, but we're not going to be assessing any fines. Really, just, we want compliance. We want to make sure that residents are complying with the ordinance to make sure that everybody's drinking water is safe within the Canton Township and that we are in compliance with state law. So, if you receive those letters, please know that those dates, if you feel like you've only got like 15 days or so to comply with those dates, please give us a call. We will work with you on that. We're also working with, like I said, with the post office as, those went out really over a month ago, and they're just now meeting everybody's mailboxes within this week, and I know Trustee Borninski has reached out to me as soon as today in regards to that. We've had some other communication with some other residents, and we're not sure what's happening with that. This isn't the first time, and we apologize for that, but we are continuing to work with our residents in making sure that, we just want compliance. It's not about fees, it's not about hitting that particular date, so give us a call if you have any questions, and we will be more than happy to work with you on whatever it takes to get everybody into compliance and make sure everybody's drinking water is safe in the Canton Township. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Real quick, Madam Supervisor, I just want to let the board know, we're seeing some exceptional police work with our folks right now. Number two, I appreciate the ad hoc committee as we work through the next step of our embedded social workers who we met last week, and I think they represented some good information to help guide the next steps. I think, last thing I want to mention is hopefully our own Grace West wins tonight on The Voice.
That's right, Canton's Grace West, go. She's got a good voice. John?
Want to echo what Director Smith said and thank you all for your support of the items tonight. Title project, of course, is huge for the summit, shows Canton's commitment into our crown jewel, as we like to call it, as well as the Canton Sports Center, which we talked about earlier, and the position, of course. So, lots of good stuff tonight, again, a huge, huge win. Canton Cup this weekend, right?
Yes.
So, if you're going out to eat or you're trying to navigate around town, keep that in mind. It's great for our community, brings in hundreds and hundreds of teams and people, and, right? It was kind of what put Canton on the map in the early days was the Memorial Cup Soccer Tournament, so we're excited to be hosting them once again this year and hosting all of our teams from out of town. Farmers markets continue to be in full swing. If you haven't been out there, we're two-for-two on weather and huge days with the farmers' market. Fenders have been very happy, it's been well attended, we've had just a great start to the season out there. Every Sunday, nine-to-one, Preservation Park. And next Saturday, June 3rd, we've got the National Trails Day coming up, so I encourage everybody to go down to Lower Rouge Recreation Trail and participate in our activities that day, along with MSD, our great partners. And then I want to put a little plug in for a new event called Park Run. It's been started by a group of volunteers, it's every Saturday, 8:00 AM, at the trail. You can go and you can work on your 5K, whether you're a runner or a walker, it doesn't matter, but they'll time you, they'll post, you know, send you results, it's great. It's a great program, great group, I'll say kids because it was started by high school students, and I was very impressed by the organization. So, every Saturday from now through October, 8:00 AM, it's a great way to start your day and get some activity in on the weekend, so I encourage you to do it. Is that at the trailhead or where do you meet? It starts, great question, thank you. It starts at the South Canton Scholars parking lot, so they've got an agreement with South Canton Scholars to start it there, and it goes and it picks up onto the trail right from their parking lot, and it's from, basically between Canton Center and Sheldon. It's a nice route, it's got some hills to it, so be ready if you haven't been training, but again, it's at your own pace, so it's a great event. Definitely check it out.
That went on Facebook, did we put that on? Okay.
Yeah, we're getting it word out slowly. They just held their second week, so we'll get it out. It's been on social media, we'll let the community know, we're working on the focus article and different things, so, but yeah, like I said, I was very impressed, and I think it's going to be something that Canton residents rally behind in the future.
Very good, thank you. Any other staff?
I'd like to, once again, thank the board for your approval of a new firewall for the township. That project was implemented today, we started at 4:00 AM, and so it was completed, so I want to thank you all, I want to say that this is an interesting experience, all right? Thank you also to all those who cooperated with the ITI Department as we also transitioned you for your, from the old VPN to the new VPN. I believe we reached out to most of you. Thank you for working with us and understanding. We're now in a new platform, and we'll continue to adapt, let me put it that way.
Thank you. Kate, start with the board, do you have anything?
Just hope that everyone has a happy Memorial Day and hope for good weather and some good barbecue.
Steven?
Also hoping that the weather starts to be more warm than it has been in the past, and it seems like it's going in that direction, and everybody have a good start to summer.
Tanya?
Yeah, wanted to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend. I just wanted to thank John for helping with this park run. I was approached by a local youth asking if they could do this, and I connected them to John, and he helped them coordinate it and make this happen, so thank you for the plugin, too, and they really appreciate that you're highlighting this on Facebook, and I think it'll be a good event because it's run by the local youth here, and I hope to participate in this in the summer.
But she's not telling you, she didn't tell me before she sent them my way, she only found out after, well, she knew afterward. I had found out afterward. It's a good test, it was a good, I hope I passed.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jade, did you have something?
I did, I have one more item, and I apologize if I forgot. I want to make sure that I give hats off to Dave Norwood, the Deputy MSD Director. On June 3rd, we are going to be having our, John alluded to it earlier, about our river days or trail days, and we are going to be able to kayak and canoe the Lower Rouge, and I'll let Dave go into more details, but I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. This is the last meeting we have before that, and we've been out there making sure that we clear the river to make sure that if you want to canoe or kayak the river, that that can happen on June 3rd. We have lots of other opportunities that are going to happen that day, from birdhouse building, beehive building, other educational opportunities about what the river actually does for the Lower Rouge and for the Metro Detroit area, so we want to make sure we encourage all the, you know, the public to come out as they have in the past, and there is some great things. So, if you actually walk the trail in the next couple of weeks, you'll see some signs out there with some QR codes, you can scan those QR codes and actually find all the events that are going to happen that day, and if Dave wants to add anymore, I would welcome him to do that, but I encourage everybody to bring their canoes or kayaks on June 3rd and join Dave, and I hear that Supervisor Graham Hudek's going to be on the river as well and her kayak.
It will be kayaking.
And, yes, yeah, so it should be pretty exciting, so I invite everybody, and Dave, if you want to add anymore, I would welcome you to do that.
Yeah, the river looks great. We will be kayaking, it's going to be about a half an hour float from, contained within the Morton Taylor Trailhead there, so, because we're going to be opening up some more of the river and working with friends at a rouge, too, so the idea is to go all the way down to Hagerty at some point, so we're looking forward. It's Motor City canoe rental, we'll be providing the service for free for Canton residents to paddle on the river.
Help with chainsaws and clearing the river?
I always welcome people with chainsaws to work on the river.
Is it, people can help?
No, 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 not you, Michael.
Yeah, sorry. I don't think Stephen wants to use chainsaws.
I don't get near chainsaws, that's for sure.
He's done, he's done.
Yeah, we don't clear log jams, we open up log jams for paddling, because the wood in the river is actually good for the fish, so it's a good fish habitat, so, but we want to open up for folks to paddle.
That's true, because we aren't allowed to take it out, but like you said, we can just move it.
Open it up, yes.
Open it up. Okay, open.
Chainsaw.
Well, some places chainsaw.
Thanks, Jade, thanks, Dave. Summer, did you have anything?
So, this isn't really township-related, but I went, before the board meeting tonight, went to PSEPs, Senior Capstone STEM Academy presentation, and it was really cool to see the senior projects for the kids in the STEM Academy on engineering, biomedical, computer science, cybersecurity, and the kids were tasked with finding a problem, identifying a problem, and having a limited budget to solve it, and the kids in our community are so amazing, they did work to help kids with autism, there is projects on sleep apnea and motion sickness and like lowering your heart rate when you're sleeping, and it was just really incredible to see the creativity and enthusiasm of the kids in our community. And it was just really incredible to see the creativity, enthusiasm of the kids in our community and it makes you think that our future is bright and can't wait to see what comes next.
Cool. Thank you. Michael?
I don't think you have anything. I know I was in Lansing today. I saw Representative Renjiev, I tricked you. Saw Representative Renjiev Puri. He told me that he had a lovely coffee hour yesterday with Wayne County Commissioner. Melissa Dob, thank you. And so he told me to, to tell you all that he said hello. I also saw our other representative, Kevin Coleman, and I did not get to see Faith Norwood unfortunately. But I did see both of our representatives and so yeah, I was testifying on a, a bill for pre-registration of 16-year-olds for voting. I was testifying in favor of that bill. So we'll see what happens, but it would actually make my life substantially easier and lead to better voter registration rolls, so. Pretty cool. And then also promote turnout for, for voters when they finally get to turn 18, so.
Very cool.
Yeah, pretty cool. Pretty, pretty, pretty cool.
Reminded by Trustee Snyderman that I did not do the final public comment. We have nobody in the room, but we do have three people online. If you would like to do public comment, three people online, public comment? Oh, we do have Connor. I'm sorry. Okay, Connor, you want to go ahead and speak? You have three minutes.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what were the names of the GFL employees who were here earlier?
We had, well, we had Sam Karamango, then Jesse and Nick.
Jesse, Jesse Burgess, I think is name, and Nick, I believe it's Alan.
Alan.
Right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Anything else? No? Okay, great, thank you. I just want to say a few things. I don't know if we mentioned it last time, but we are, Canton is now a Michigan Green Community Gold Gold Level, so thank you very much for that, everybody, and that means our staff and we're doing more green things and like today, we just expanded our parks, so that should give us some. And also some of the extra points for, because of our DEI initiatives within the township. We also, we had a building and inspector proclamation given, so to appreciate all of the workers and building inspections this month. Another thing is Merit Commission, I don't know if everybody, just to let everybody know, so the Merit Commission passed a new, they finally cleaned up the Merit Commission and Tanya was on that committee with Deputy Joseph Haver and some employees and they finally cleaned up that thing and the Merit Commission passed it and so this is like 15 years in coming. The Merit Policy, yes.
The Merit Policy?
Yes, yeah, they should clear up.
What did, do you mind if I ask?
No, go ahead.
What some of the changes may have been or what you were focused on?
So we, we worked for, it, it took us six months to do this. We had like bi-weekly meetings and it was Merit employees from all over different departments. And first of all, we cleared up the confusing language about, you know, about, you know, succession planning and like, you know, if we, if there are layoffs, what's the process and how it's taken care of? And then we did choose two rounds of, you know, public hearing within the Merit employees and it went around and we got feedback and we went through them and we supplied answers to them. And I think two Mondays ago, we went to Merit Commission's meeting and it was passed through the Merit Commission, so. So, yeah, and you know, there was also the question about having Juneteenth as a holiday there and they also had this question because TPOM had brought, brought it up, so. There were multiple things that were addressed during these meetings and I think it was very productive. You know, there were people speaking for and against some of the things and it was a very collaborative process.
Comments and they made adjustments as such, so you know, congratulations to our employees that were on that board and Rochelle Haver who helped lead it and Tanya and Joseph Haver, so. It was a good process and that was a long time, so they took like 26 pages and brought it down. So I'm very proud of everybody. Another thing is Memorial Day is Monday, so our, our guard, our, our honor guard will be holding an event behind in the administration building at 10 o'clock in the morning. So it usually lasts about a half an hour to 45 minutes, so if anybody wants to come for that Memorial Day. Also, I joined the SEMCOG commuter, so they, SEMCOG is trying to talk about, to people about riding buses or transit or carpooling or riding your bikes to work, so I started riding my bike to work again. Yeah, so I had fun doing that, but I do want to say, I saw people talking on their phones, I saw people texting, I saw people going through red lights and stoplights. So people slow down.
Watch for bicyclists.
Watch for bicyclists. I was in the crosswalk here on Palmer and Canton Center Crossing and someone turned left right in front of me. I mean, while I was in the crosswalk. That's pretty dangerous.
That distracted driving out of your system now because the governor's about to sign that bill in Plymouth.
That's right. That's right. So people have to be careful with pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, and this is all over the township, everywhere you drive actually, but so please be more careful than I saw this morning.
Do you have sidewalk gaps on your way into work?
No, I'm lucky. It used to be sidewalk gaps down Palmer, but not anymore, so I could just ride the sidewalk all the way in. But if anyone wants to join, there's a way to join. Also, the United.
Can I ride out of my house and back into it?
Yes.
That's where I work, so.
Yes. That's true, you can.
I do that every morning.
Well, it tracks you. So you put where you, you start and where you finish, but you'd have to, you might have some waypoints to show that you've gone somewhere.
Oh, yeah, I, I do. I ride eight miles, so that's fine.
Could you take the, could you take the trail?
I just start and end at the same place.
Yeah, you could take the trail anywhere you want.
That's good. Right out of your way, isn't it?
That would work.
My way, yes, because it heads south and then comes back north, but I could do it, yes. Well, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Meeting is adjourned.